So it is 11 o'clock and just to be mindful of timing, I think we should get started. What do you think, Joe?
Yeah.
Yep.
Get started.
All right, everyone. Well, hello. How's it going? We are so happy to have you here with us today. My name is Zaza and I'm joined by my amazing co-presenter Jolene today. And we are from Prep Table, an RD exam test prep program. And we're thrilled to be hosting these free live sessions with students like you today. Now, we're going to be diving into something that is coming up sooner rather than later for many of you. The RD exam. Our goal for this session is to give you a solid understanding of this exam before you actually begin your test prep process. But before we actually go into any details or objectives, let's take a moment to introduce ourselves. Like I said, my name is Zaza. My personal strengths are in food service and management. And I've worked in this field for about 10 or more years at this point. So it's one that I know and I really love it. I met Jolene back in 2018 when we started our coordinated master's program at University of Southern California, so USC for short. And we both became registered dietitians in 2021. Now, today I co-own Prep Table, but I also worked as an adjunct professor at Merritt College in Oakland, where I teach nutrition courses like food production systems and food service management. Now, Jolene's background is practically the opposite of mine, and that's exactly what makes us such a great team.
Hi, everyone. I hope you can hear me okay. I'm a little bit under the weather. It's good to see you all here. Unlike Zaza, who is an expert in food service, my background is pretty clinical. I have worked in hospitals, ER, long-term care facilities since 2013. I got a neuroscience degree before I decided to switch my career choice and got my master in nutrition. I met Zaza at USC on the very first day of grad school. I remember we were sitting at the back of the classroom. Everyone was a little jittery, a little nervous on the first day, and she laughed at my jokes. So our friendship continued to thrive till this day. In 2020, we went through pandemic together while studying for the RD exam with just the black and white paper materials. Coming out of that experience, Zaza and I said, you know what? We can do a better job. We can make a better program for visual and auditory learners like ourselves. So we established Prep Table as a one-stop shop to help RD2Bs pass this test. Since then, we've used our combined expertise to help many students pass this exam. Most of our students pass on their first attempt. We've also helped students who are repeat test takers to comb through their knowledge gaps and regain their test confidence. And in today's session, we'll be sharing our knowledge with you on how to pass the RD exam.
Now, we do anticipate the session to go on for about 50 minutes. We're going to aim for a hard stop at 11:50. So please save your questions for the last 10 minutes. We'll hold a general Q and A then.
All right, let's go over our today's objective. What are we gonna do? First, let's understand the structure of the RD exam. This will give you the foundation to learn how to prepare for the RD exam. Specifically, what are the eight types of RD exam questions you may encounter? And what are some good tips and tricks on solving multiple choice questions? After that, let's try out eight practice RD exam questions together. If you have questions, please type them in our chat box. I know I muted everyone for the sake of easy recording. We have a packed schedule today, so I will keep my third eye open for the chat box additionally. If you have a more personal question, you can always email us at team@preptable.org.
So let's dive into what exactly is even on this RD exam. The RD exam, as you can see on the left-hand side of the slide here, is broken down into four domains. So we have domain one, which is principles of dietetics. Domain three, which is basically MNT. Domain, oh, sorry, domain two, which is basically MNT. Domain three, food service management. And then domain four is food service systems. Now, each domain is weighed a bit differently, as you can see in this image on the left-hand side of the slide. So for example, MNT makes up about 45% of the exam, while domain four, food service systems, makes up about 13%, and so on. Now, the RD exam is what's called a SMART test, meaning it adapts to your performance as you go. And each question is then scored based on difficulty as well. So you can anticipate a mix of easy, medium, and hard questions that will then be weighed accordingly. Now, something unique about this exam is that you're going to be answering one question at a time. And once you submit your answer, you cannot go back and change it. And this is something you're going to want to practice moving forward, just so that you can get used to the feeling of answering those questions and then moving forward without overthinking it. Now, once you've actually completed the exam, it ends with a survey. And you cannot skip this survey. You have to fill out every question to be able to obtain your final score. And then finally, the RD exam is scored out of 50 points, and a passing score is 25 or above.
All right, so how many questions are you gonna get on the exam? Well, it depends on how well you are doing. You can get a minimum of 125 or up to 145 question maximum on this RD exam. If you've done really well or not really well when you finish question 125, you won't be given any more questions. You will go directly to that post-test survey and then be given your scale scores. However, if you get to your question 125 and you're on the cusp of failing or passing, this exam will give you a second chance of sort, where you'll be given up to 20 more questions for the SMART exam to evaluate you further. So like Zaza said before, it's a SMART test that assesses your ability as you go. If you do well with these additional questions and you raise your score above the passing line, the test can automatically stop anywhere between question 125 to question 145. Again, this is why you can get up to a maximum of 145 questions depending on your test performance. Now, keep in mind, within these questions you're given, there are 25 CDR tester questions built into your exam. They are not scored, and how well you answer on these tester questions will not affect your final scores. But since you don't know which question is a tester question versus real exam question, you still gotta try your best on every single question. Finally, the test is now three hours long, which is 180 minutes total, whether you get 125 or up to 145 questions. That is why we recommend an average pace of one minute per question, right? There will be questions that takes longer to solve, like a calculation one, maybe three to five minutes, but there will always be these definition-based questions that you can solve within like 20 seconds. Now, you have to finish question 125 within that three-hour timeframe. If you do not submit question 125 when the clock is counting down to zero, you fail no matter what, and you won't even get a score. This means, let's say, for example, you've got 30 seconds left on the clock, and you're still on question 122. It is more important that you select answer for the next three questions. Don't even waste time reading them. You just gotta make sure you have the answer selected for at least question 125. That way, at least you have a chance to get a score, to know how well you did.
We definitely want you to get a score, especially hours answering all of them.
Cinderella style. You gotta hit 125.
All right, so how are you going to actually prepare for this RD exam then? This is a question that many students approach us with because just getting started with this process can feel really overwhelming. So we have these three recommendations that we like to share. The first is you need to assess your current knowledge. What is your comfort level with all of the RD exam materials? You gotta figure out what your strengths, what your weaknesses are. Once again, it's super easy to feel overwhelmed because the four domains include a lot of material. So be realistic about this, okay? The second recommendation we have is to choose a test date. However, to do that, you're gonna need to establish how much time it's going to take you personally to study for the RD exam. So for frame of reference, it took most of our students about two to three months to feel prepared to take it on. And even on a personal level, I think it took me about three months as well. But how much time you will personally need will depend on your personal circumstances. Are you a busy bee, or do you have the luxury of time? It's gonna take some students longer than others, and that is completely okay. So once you have a good grasp on this, that's when you're gonna pick your personal timeframe and then your test date. And the reason we tell students to do this is because having this end goal is gonna help keep you organized, but also keep you motivated to stay on track. And that is very important with a test like this. Lastly, we recommend students create a study plan. Organization is going to be vital to your success for this test. So we recommend using either a calendar or we have a free template to map out what you will study, when you will study, and how much time you have approximately for each domain. And then we also like to suggest setting aside two weeks for general review at the end of this study period. And this time is critical to go over materials again, but it's also gonna be when you're gonna start making those critical connections between the domains. The RD exam loves to test students on that. On top of that, it's gonna give you time to go over your mnemonics, your formulas, and to complete practice exams. Try to incorporate two to three practice exams into your schedule before the real deal, just to get a feel for your pacing. Remember, the RD exam is a marathon. It is something that you need to practice. Get a sense of what it feels like to sit there for three hours and answer 145 questions in a row. So definitely work on that prior to test day.
Now that you know the structure of the RD exam, let's go over the eight types of questions you may see on the exam. Understanding the characteristic of these type of questions will help you prepare more effectively. I will cover the first four types. Zaza will cover the last four. Keep in mind, there will be some overlapping between the characteristics of these questions. For example, an RD exam question can test you both definition-based and evaluation-based question within one question. Okay, let's get started. So the first type of question is definition or fact-based. This will quiz your general knowledge, and it requires your co-memorization of the concepts. For example, how wide should the kitchen aisle be to accommodate busy traffic? What are the symptoms for E. coli food poisoning? These type of questions just are testing your ability to know the facts and know them really well. Next up, we have decision-making questions. These are also called situational questions. They often present a clinical or counseling scenario in a very wordy way, where you need to make a choice based on your clinical judgment. What you gotta do here is you gotta read the scenario carefully and read through all the options and consider your patient's current condition, preferences, and relevant clinical guidelines. Here, you gotta quickly weigh the pros and cons of your A, B, C, and D and choose the best option. The third type is evaluation-based. This is the type of question that's testing your ability to build a connection with your client or patient, employee, or your ability to better a program. So you gotta start by asking open-ended questions to gather relevant information and establish rapport. The goal here is you gotta encourage honest communication and feedback. And let's say if you're evaluating a program as a director, it is your job to find the right tools to assess your program outcomes, right? The fourth type of question centers around education and training. They typically involve providing nutrition information and counseling to patients or clients. And at here, you gotta start by understanding that individual's needs, literacy level, and readiness to change. Afterwards, you can tailor your response to that individual's levels of understanding and their learning style. Remember our motivational interviewing techniques. That's where this come in.
Okay, perfect. Now, the fifth type of question you'll see is community-focused. And these questions assess your ability to assess needs, plan, implement, and evaluate nutrition programs specifically within community settings. Now, you may be asked to identify which phase of program planning you're in, and then based on that, determine the most appropriate next steps. These questions often test your understanding of program planning principles and how to measure outcomes effectively. So be sure to be familiar with concepts like needs assessment and evaluation strategies for these types of questions. Now, the sixth type of question you'll see is management-related. These cover a wide range of topics. So it may include things like managing food service operations, supervising staff, handling financial responsibilities, and even those pesky management theories that we all need to know for this exam. Now, one concept that we love to tell students to keep in mind is the acronym PODC, so Plan, Organize, Direct, and Control, which outlines the managerial functions. We feel that using this framework really helps recall information specifically within domain three effectively. Now, with these questions, there's also this strong emphasis on participative management. And this is a leadership style where employees feel empowered, they're involved in decision-making, and they take ownership of their work. So when you're faced with a situational or a decision-making type of question, look for the answer that promotes that collaborative and supportive work environment. It's usually your best bet. Now, the seventh type of question focuses on food service. And these questions cover topics like menu planning, inventory control, quality assurance. So all of the things that keep a food service system running smoothly. You're often gonna be asked to analyze a situation, figure out what's going wrong, and then choose the most effective solution. But here's the key tip. Don't jump straight to a solution. A common mistake is trying to find the problem or trying to fix the problem, excuse me, before fully understanding it. So instead, focus on that investigation first. Gather the facts, identify the root cause, and then make a decision based on what you've learned, okay? Now, finally, the last type of question you'll see, calculation. As the name suggests, these involve doing math, and they do cover a very wide range of topics on this exam. So you may be asked to calculate tube feeds, but you could also be asked to calculate the prime or use the prime cost method to determine the best sales price for a meal or solve other math problems that just relate to each domain individually. And every domain includes its own type of calculations, so it's important to be familiar with all of them. And to help you out with this, we've actually created three calculation cheat sheets, which are available to download on our website, and they're a great way to get started. And these are free. You could just go on there and download them, and they're yours. Now, here's the key with calculation questions. Don't just memorize formulas. Make sure to understand them. Know what data the question is asking for and how to pick out the relevant information because the RD exam often likes to throw in little extra details just to confuse you. So with enough practice and a solid understanding of what each formula is for, you'll be, you will definitely be ready to take on these questions, no problem.
Well, by now, you know, the RD exam is all multiple choice questions. This is great news for someone who is good at standardized testing. But if you're like me and you are an over thinker and you struggle with multiple choice, here are our five tips. Some of them you may already know, some you might not. These are great tips, both when you are doing practice questions at home and during your actual exam. So let's go over them together. First up, very intuitively, if you're unsure about an answer, use the process of elimination to get rid of the choice. You know they are wrong, right? This will improve your odds, even if you're not entirely sure of the correct answer. Let's say if you absolutely don't know the answer to a question. In fact, you don't even know what the question is asking. Don't linger too long. Pick an answer and move on because your time is better spent on question you have some clues about. Next up, read every option. Even if you think you found the right answer early on, please make sure you read through all the A, B, C, and D's before making your final selection. A good strategy here is to use the benchmark method. When you start reading all the options, find one that sounds correct and benchmark that option as a possible answer. Then read through the rest thoroughly, comparing them to your benchmark to assess if these options are better or worse. If no other option is better than your benchmark choice, is your final selection for answer. Keep in mind, some answers on the RD exam sound correct on its own merit, but they're not answering what the question is asking. So it's really important you double-check on that question before you select your final selection. For our third tip, trying to find key terms and key words in a question to help you narrow down the answer. When you encounter a wordy situational question, half of your screens are descriptive words on what's happening in that scenario, start by reading that final line, which is often the question itself first. That way, when you go back and going through that nitty-gritty of the question, you already have a sense what you are looking for. Next up, be cautious of answer choices that include absolute words like always, never, all, or none. Often, these options are incorrect because there are exceptions in many cases. Finally, do not overthink or second-guess yourself too much. Excessively debating between two choices on one multiple-choice question is often a waste of your time. Furthermore, do not overthink. Once you hit submit and go to the next question, your time is better spent on solving the new question at hand than doubting your old choices.
That's very true. We can attest to that. So now that you have these great multiple-choice tips in mind, we're gonna start going over some practice problems together. And we've compiled about eight questions that we're gonna go over together today. Please participate by typing your answer into the chat box as we go along. And we're gonna give you about 30 seconds per question here. And then we'll go over each one thoroughly as well. So let's get started here.
All right, here's our first question. Which bill requests government funding? Take a look. When you feel ready, type it out in our chat box. I won't remember what you chose, so it's all good. All right, I see one. Good. We got 15 more seconds left here. I'm gonna wait just a little bit so everyone has a chance to participate and make their guess. This is pretty much a definition-based question. So these are the type of question, um, once you're familiar, hoping that you can get it done within a minute. All right. Let's go over question one together. This is our domain one question, testing your knowledge on basic government functions and legislative process. Things are very important in today's, today's world. So let's go over each option. A, appropriation bill. This is a legislative act that provides funding for the government agency and programs. These bills must be passed by the Congress to authorize the government to spend that cash from the treasury. We'll learn about this in lecture 16, so if you're a current student, you can find that info there. Answer A is likely correct. Let's benchmark it and look at other options. B, the budget bill. I see someone or multiple folks choosing the budget bill here. Budget bill sets the overall spending, revenue, and deficit targets for the federal government. It outlines physical blueprint, but it does not actually fund programs. Again, to make this complicated legal term simple to understand, the budget bill is like the government saying, we have about $5 to spend this year. The appropriation bill is the one that's saying, well, let's spend $1 out of that $5 on USDA. These numbers are completely false and made up, but this should help you understand the difference between appropriation bill and budget bill. In short, the budget bill, also called budget resolution, is a planning tool. While the appropriation bills are the execution. C, markup bill. This term markup, what does that mean? It refers to the process of amending legislature in a committee. So this is kind of like when you're in college, when you and your teammates drafting a group project together before you turn in your final product. This active editing process itself is called markup. This does not directly deal with funding, so C is definitely wrong. D, dollar bill. I'm glad no one chose this because it's completely wrong and not relevant, okay? On the exam, there will be these bluntly wrong answers, and this is one of those. Overall, B, C, and D do not specifically request government funding in the same way appropriation bill does. So A is your best answer.
Good job for those of you who got that right. Okay, now question two. What is the primary role of hydrochloric acid in the stomach? Is it A, to emulsify fats? B, to activate pepsinogen? C, to transport amino acids? Or D, to neutralize chyme? We'll give you about 30 seconds.
Thank you for, everyone, for engaging. I really appreciate it. I know I have y'all mute. So your, your only way of expressing yourself is the chat box. Really nice. I appreciate you typing them out.
And this is another classic definition-style question here. So you should be able to answer this pretty readily, and it seems like a lot of you are. So I'm gonna go ahead and start answering this one. So this is domain one, digestion question. Let's break down each option here. A, emulsify fats. Now, this is primarily the role of bile salts. Remember those? They're the ones that are produced in the liver and stored in the gallbladder. And this is primarily, um, the emulsification of fats actually occurs in the small intestine and not the stomach. So A is incorrect. Now, let's look at B, activate pepsinogen. And I made this cute little graphic here. So hydrochloric acid, also known as HCl, in the stomach activates pepsinogen into pepsin, which is an enzyme that is essential for the digestion of protein, as we should all know. Now, remember that pepsinogen is secreted in an inactive form to prevent the autodigestion of the stomach lining. And then HCl is what provides the acidic environment necessary to trigger the activation. So yes, B, as many of you answered, is the correct answer here. But like we said earlier, we always read through all of our options just in case. So let's look at C, transport amino acids. Amino acid transport happens after proteins are actually digested into amino acids, primarily, once again, in the small intestine. And then it's, um, so, but hydrochloric acid doesn't really have anything to do with the transportation of those amino acids, so C is not correct. And then D, neutralize chyme, HCl acid. And then D, neutralize chyme, HCl acidifies chyme. It does not neutralize it. So once again, the incorrect, the best answer here is B. Good job.
All right. Everyone has a phone with you? This time you might need a calculator, okay? So question number three, using the diabetic exchange list, which of the following foods would be appropriate for a hemodialysis patient on a fifty gram protein diet? Where eighty-eight percent of that is from HBV proteins. I'm gonna give you one minute, or even longer, to figure this one out, because I think we're good on time. Grab a piece of paper, paper, piece of paper and a pen, and see if you can calculate this one out.
This one's a little more challenging.
This will take a little bit longer. You feel like you know the answer, feel free to type in then a chat box. I anticipate we need another minute or so. This question, once again, has calculation and definition, right? You gotta know what this is even asking. I love that your name is iPhone two one three uh, in our chat box. In this age, it's good to have some privacy and security. That's about a minute and ten second. So I'm gonna give you another minute here, because I think I would love to see all your choices here. I love that I'm seeing already A, B, C in a chat box. This is great. If we put D in there, one of you is definitely right. Good, good. I see a couple more answer. I'm gonna give you twenty more seconds to calculate this out, and we'll go over it step by step. So feel free to type in what you think, and we'll figure it out together as a team. Nice. Thank you for writing down the answer. All right. Ten more seconds to go. Let's type it in. You know it. You gotta hit submit on the question. All right. I see a lot of Cs, some B. And the correct answer is written down by iPhone two one three. Good job. Let's go over it together, okay? So this is once again domain two question. Testing your knowledge on both the diabetic exchange lists and high biological value HBV proteins. So to solve this problem first, you need to know what HBV proteins are, right? What are they? These are high biological value proteins, also known as complete proteins. These are the proteins that contain all nine essential amino acids where your body can't produce on their own. These proteins are found where? They're found in animal products like meat, fish, poultry, eggs, and dairy. Now, since this question is asking eighty-eight percent of HBV protein, take a look at all the options. In option C and in option D, they are all animal proteins, right? That means they're all a hundred percent HBV, which means right from the beginning, you can cross off C and D, and that leaves you with just A and B. Now to solve this question even further, you need to recall the following. From that diabetic exchange list for common proteins. These are just average, okay? But you gotta remember them for the list. One large egg is about seven grams of protein. One ounce chicken is about seven grams of protein. One cup milk is around eight grams of protein. One slice of bread is around three grams of protein. Again, keep in mind, these are average score because the question said you need to use diabetic exchange list. These are the exact numbers you have to be able to recall. So based on this protein exchange value, let's look at option A and B. A, let's find the total amount of protein here. We got two eggs, which is fourteen grams of protein, two ounces of chicken, another fourteen gram, right? Two cup of milk, sixteen gram of protein, two slices of bread, which is another six gram of protein. Add them all up, it gives you fifty grams total, which is exactly what this question is asking for. That's a good sign, and let's check the HBV protein percentage. Everything here other than bread is for sure HBV protein, right? So we add the numbers from the fourteen grams plus fourteen grams plus sixteen gram divided by the total fifty gram. You get eighty-eight percent. So this protein percentage fit the question perfectly. A is definitely your correct answer. Now let's double check on B. The total protein is one egg, which is seven grams. You got one ounce chicken, another seven gram, three cups of milk, which is about twenty-four grams. And five slices of bread, which is fifteen grams. Add them all up, you get fifty-three grams total, which is over that fifty gram limit for this hemodialysis patient. B is wrong. This question took a little bit calculation, but is a great way to remind yourself. The diabetic exchange list is complicated, but you gotta remember them for the RD exam.
Perfect. Now we're gonna follow up with another question. So the Special Supplemental Nutrition Program for Women, Infants, and Children, WIC, encourages mothers with infants to adopt healthy nutrition and lifestyle practices to support child development and maternal health. Key priorities include, is it A, introduce iron-rich solid foods to babies around year one? B, feed a mixture of formula and pureed foods to babies early on? C, organize donations for breast milk bank? Or D, encourages breastfeeding for the first six months? Now this one should not take quite as long as the last one. There isn't as much calculation.
I see a lot of answers here.
Yeah. Yeah, that's excellent. All right, you guys know your WIC.
Good job, man. This is, this is really good.
Okay, so I guess I will go ahead because this one seems to be overall well-known. This is technically a combination of domains one and two for this question because we're testing students on both lifespan nutrition as well as community programs. So let's just go down the line. A, introduce iron-rich solid foods to babies around year one. This would technically be too late. Iron-rich solids like iron fortified cereal and pureed meats should be introduced around six months, not a full year. We want to prevent iron deficiency at all costs. So A is incorrect. B, feed a mixture of formula and pureed foods to babies early on. This is kind of vague, right? Early on is never something we love to see on the RD. Give you a hint that this is kind of wishy washy of an answer. And WIC does encourage exclusive breastfeeding for the first six months, which should give you a hint as to what the correct answer is. Complementary foods like purees are introduced after six months, but mixing formula with solids is not a typical or necessarily recommended practice. So B is likely incorrect as well. Then C, organize donations for breast milk bank. While donor milk can be important in certain settings, WIC is not directly involved in organizing these um, milk bank donations. It's more commonly done by hospitals, so C is incorrect. And then finally, D encourages breastfeeding for the first six months. WIC does strongly encourage this. And follow, uh, you follow up the first six months by continued breastfeeding along with appropriate complementary foods for up to a year or longer. So D, definitely the correct answer in this case. Good job, everyone.
All right, question number five. Applying the principles of scientific management, what would be the most likely outcome in food production?
It's one of those pesky management theories here.
I personally love management theories because it's full of history ingrained in it. I think we taught it in both lecture twelve and thirteen and had a lot of fun in there. I see a couple answers. All right. I'm gonna wait about twenty more seconds so I can see everyone type in their choices. All right. Let's talk about this, shall we? This is a domain three question, testing your knowledge on management theories. So to solve this question, you need to know what scientific management is. Let's talk about it. All right, scientific management, uh, if you could click in my graphic, that'd be great.
There you go.
There we go. Scientific management theory was published by a mechanical engineer Frederick Taylor in nineteen eleven. Taylor focused on efficiency and productivity. He even studied all the physical aspects of the jobs and found the quickest way to get a particular task done. So the ultimate goal of scientific management is to simplify tasks, increase work efficiency, and maximize production. In some ways, scientific management is like training the workers to be like robots for certain tasks. So if, let's take a look at all the options here. We got decreased labor turnover rate, increased worker satisfaction, C, decreased labor minute per meal, and D, increased worker hygiene. The only option that even touch on work efficiency is C. Decrease labor minute per meal, right? It means it takes less time for you to make that sandwich. So that goes back to what scientific management is trying to do, increase efficiency. C is correct.
All right, now we're getting into another calculation question here. Your food service operation is looking to invest in several upgrades to reduce labor needs and improve production efficiency. You purchase new baking racks, ventilation gear, and a combi oven. Together, the equipment costs a total of seventeen thousand eight hundred dollars. These improvements are projected to reduce labor needs by six hours per week, and your average hourly wage is twenty-five dollars per hour. What is the payback period for this investment? We're gonna give you about a minute here. And I am keeping an eye on the clock. We are getting a little bit close to our eleven fifty end time, Joe.
At twenty-five dollars an hour, we're definitely working in California. We have some great answers.
Answers, yeah. Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and start about this one. So like I said, we're tackling a domain three calculation question here. So first, what is payback period? That is the time required to recoup the cost of an investment. So to find the payback period, we use this formula here. Payback period equals the new costs divided by the money saved per week. So let's go through this step by step. Step one, we have the new costs given to us here at seventeen thousand eight hundred for all of the new equipment we just purchased. The second step is we want to calculate the weekly labor savings. To do that, we're simply gonna take the six hours per week that is um, gonna be reduced in labor here, and we're gonna multiply that by the twenty-five dollars per hour. It's gonna give us a hundred and fifty dollars per week saved. And then we could simply plug this into this payback period formula. So seventeen thousand eight hundred divided by a hundred and fifty dollars per week. It gives us a hundred and eighteen point six seven weeks, which is approximately a hundred and nineteen weeks. So B here is the best answer. Good job, everyone.
Question number seven, let's go. Which food service system is most likely to reduce labor costs while maintaining consistency across multiple locations? All right, I'm gonna take a look in the chat to see what everyone think. Nice. I'm seeing some answers flowing in. I like what I'm seeing. I think we're narrowing down to the good choices here. All right. For the sake of time, let me just jump in and start explaining. Question seven is testing your knowledge on food production system in domain four. Now, both A conventional and B cook, cook serve systems require skilled chefs, which means higher labor costs. So we can cross A and B off the list. C, assembly serve system. The classic example of our assembly serve is Subway sandwich shops, right? It has low labor costs because it doesn't need specialized chef, but it relies on external suppliers. So maintaining consistency is harder. For example, have you ever had the exact tasting Subway sandwich in different state? Probably not, right? D, commissary. Commissary has centralized food production in one facility, like a main kitchen hub. And then they distribute pre-prepared meals to satellite locations like chain restaurants, schools, hospitable, hospitals, or grocery stores. This reduced the onsite labor and skill requirement. It also reduced inconsistency. So D is our correct answer here.
And I'm actually, for the sake of time, we are going to skip the last question, but we will get to this at our next study session, we promise. And we're gonna head straight into this, Joe.
All right, so now that you know what to anticipate and what to So now that you know what to anticipate and what to expect on your test day, let's talk about what we at PrepPeople can do to help. What, what makes us unique is that we really focus on auditory and visual learnings. We have spent a lot of hours making memorable tables, charts, graphics. Some of those you probably saw in today's session to help you build a roadmap among these pretty scattered RD exam concepts. We ensure that anyone with a basic nutrition background can utilize our lectures and strengthen their knowledge in all four domain of the RD exam. We've thoroughly reviewed the updated CDR study outline and grouped the most important concepts into sixteen lecture packages in our complete program. Now, each lecture includes clear learning objectives, just like what we did today. Memorable graphics, a recorded video where Zaza and my heads are floating through the video to help you out. It has worksheets, supplements, and targeted RD exam practice question within each lecture package. So as you're sitting, you can fill out our worksheets, which will become your final study guides. We understand that each student has very unique studying needs. So to accommodate this, we offer our program in three following ways. If you have targeted learning needs, our domain packages are perfect for you. Let's say you just need to brush up on domain one. Then you can head on to get domain one package that covers digestion, metabolic pathways, and all that important minerals and vitamins you have to memorize for the RD exam. If you want a comprehensive studying plan like I did when I was studying for the RD exam, go for our complete program. It contains all sixteen of our lectures, which equate to twenty hours of teaching content. We have over a thousand practice questions here, and it is seventy-five day access for four hundred fifteen dollar. Now, if you don't pass on your first try using our complete program, you have a free forty-five day extension. This is the amount of time you need to wait before you are even allowed to take your second exam from the CDR. So our extension period will cover for you during that extension, that waiting period time. Finally, you can use our complete program via subscription at a hundred ninety-nine dollar per month. This is great for students who need flexibility, who doesn't want to be constricted by our seventy-five day timeline. This is also great for students who are repeat test takers, who have already studied everything and just need a thirty-day brush up. And a hundred ninety-nine, this is the most competitive pricing on the market for a complete RD exam program. Whether you study with us using our complete program or individual domain packages, you will get the support of both Zaza and myself, two passionate RDs who are ready to help.
And if you're looking for more RD exam questions, we do have you covered. So we have this free RD knowledge self-assessment tool with fifty questions that covers all four domains. And the best part of this is that we've already posted a detailed explanation video on YouTube where we walk you through every single question, kind of like we were just doing before. It's a great resource, especially if you're just getting started with your RD exam prep. Now earlier, remember I mentioned that the first step in preparing is to assess what you already know? This tool is perfect for that. And you could find it on our website under the resources section. And I know we've mentioned our website a few times now. So let me bring us to this slide, and Jolene will tell you exactly where to find it.
Here is our website page, preptable.org. Uh, we host all sixteen of our lectures on a platform called Teachable. Uh, if you could click in, so currently, our lecture fifteen focusing on E and P and calculation is free and available to the public on this platform. It's a great way to see if our teaching styles matches your learning need. We are also on TikTok. For now, before it get banned in maybe twenty days, we do RD exam tips and question of the day there. This is a great free resource for the public. You're welcome to follow us there for more studying tips. All right, thank you so much for your active participation in the chat box, and thank you for joining us here. Uh, before we start Q and A, we wanted to let you know we'll be hosting our next live study session on Monday, June second. Again, at eleven AM, we'll make sure we cover the question we didn't finish today and add eight more there. That session will tackle on how do we reduce your test anxiety and discuss the RD exam test experience and expectations. We'll also practice more RD exam questions, very much like today.
So we have about five minutes now for general Q and A. If you feel comfortable, please feel free to either speak up if we want to take off the mute or write your question in the chat. We could answer it that way as well. Uh, if you do have longer questions though, you can also email us at team@preptable.org. We do try to prioritize answering our students. So expect a reply within two to three business days. And if you want to get a notification for this next study session, you can subscribe directly on our website on preptable.org. Just go to the homepage, scroll all the way down, and input your information there. We do look forward to seeing you at our next session, and thank you so much for joining us today once again.